Thank you very much, Chief. My name is Jason Perro, Chairman of the Northborough Board of Selectmen, and I call to order the Monday, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. First item of business, I suppose, is for me to go through and read all of preliminary matter for these remote meetings. So this is an open meeting of the Northborough Board of Selectmen being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID nineteen virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirements of the open meeting law to have all all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. This order, which is posted at the top of our agenda for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless participation is required by law. For this meeting, we will have public access for a public hearing at the start of the agenda and also for a public comment period towards the end of the meeting. Let's see. From people who are participating in the meeting, it's being conducted conducted by the Zoom application. Understand and note that the meeting is being recorded. If you're visible on video, you are being recorded. Please be aware of that. You're also any sounds coming through. You may want to mute your microphone if you're not speaking to ensure that no other noise from your end is intruding upon the meeting. Ground rules of the meeting. We'll proceed through the agenda. I will invite the presenters to speak. And presentations are concluded. I will go down through the members of the board to invite their comments, questions. Also twenty staff members, and if the agenda item provides for it for any public input. Please wait for your name to be called, wait to be recognized. Please speak clearly in a way that helps us to generate accurate minutes. For any responses, please wait for the chair to yield the floor to you. If you wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair and wait to be recognized before speaking. For public comment, we'll give the instructions at that time for how people can participate. With that, I think that pretty much concludes it. I just want to go through the people who are on the meeting at the moment and ensure that we have connection with everyone. I'm Jason Pro, Chair in the Board of Selectmen. Tim Kalen, Vice Chair.
Hi, Don.
Hi. Thank you, Tim. Leslie Ratan, Clerk. Julian Hirsch.
Present.
And Scott Rogers.
Present.
We also have town staff members on the meeting. Town Administrator John Cudair.
Present.
Police Chief William Liver.
Present.
Fire Chief David Parenti.
Present.
Chief Parenti is also co-hosting our remote meeting. And Department of Public Works Director Scott Sharpton here.
Present.
Additionally, we have Kathy Dogleesh of Northborough Cable Access taking care of some of our transmission capabilities for this evening's meeting. With that, I think we can begin with the agenda. First item of business is approval of minutes of August ten, two thousand and twenty meeting. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the August ten, two thousand and twenty meeting minutes.
Second.
I'm sorry, was that Tim seconding?
Yes.
Leslie moved, Tim seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I should state because this is a remote meeting, all votes will be by roll call. So for the approval of meeting minutes, Scott Rogers. I'm sorry, Scott did not hear you.
Aye.
Thank you. Julian Hirsch.
Aye.
Leslie Ratan.
Aye.
Tim Kalen.
Aye.
And I, Jason Pro, also vote aye. Minutes are approved unanimously. So past the hour of seven o'clock, and we have a public hearing to consider petition number two nine eight four three six four six as submitted by Massachusetts Electric Company, National Grid, for a new poll on Green Street. And Chief Parenti, do you have our representative?
I do. I'll promote him right now.
Thank you. Mr. Parent, I can see you're here. Just saw you unmute. Mr. Parent, yes.
Yes.
Is that the correct pronunciation of your last name?
Right, yep.
Yep, thank you very much. So we have the petition number two nine eight four three six four six for a National Grid new poll on Green Street in Northborough. Would you just care to present some of the details for that?
So the reason for this poll is it's a guy stub poll that would relieve the tension going in the direction of the customer's house at two forty-five. It's just necessary you cross the street. There's no, there's no power. I know there's a customer out there who's asking about power loss, but it doesn't involve any power cables. It's just, just tension and bring them back across across the street.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any input from town staff? Scott, would you care to speak to this? Scott Sharpton, DPW Director?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. It's a terminal pole. There's two properties, two forty-five and two forty-nine Green Street that are served by the pole. The guy tree is across the street. It's nothing but a statue in poor condition, covered in vines. We looked at the site. It's a slightly narrow area, but we recommend approval and recommend that National Grid reach out to police for a detail when performing the work.
Great, thank you very much. We do have the memo from Fred Litchfield, Town Engineer, recommending approval of this with the condition that you specify, and Fred's not able to be on the meeting tonight. Any other comments about this from or questions from board members? I'm not seeing any. This is a public hearing. If there's anybody connected to the call who wants to comment on this issue, could you please raise your hand if you're connected through the Zoom application? You can do the raise hand mechanism if you're, and I think we only have that. We don't have anyone connected by phone, so. I see three connected attendees. I do not see any hands raised to comment on this issue. With that, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I I move that we close the hearing.
Very good. Second.
Mr. Chair, a hand just went up. I don't know if you want to take that or not.
Yes. Sure, we can check with him.
Okay, you want me to just allow him to speak?
Sure, yeah.
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Wickstead. Yes, did you want to speak on this issue of the public hearing for a National Grid poll on Green Street?
No, I wanted to speak on a different matter.
This is a public hearing at the moment for a poll on Green Street. It's not public comment period yet.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So we have a motion to close the public hearing. Was there a second? Leslie second, Julian had the motion. Again, roll call. Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Julian Hirsch?
Aye.
Leslie Ratan?
Aye.
Tim Kalen?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The public hearing is closed. Any further discussion by the board on this matter? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to approve and execute petition number two nine eight four three six four six as submitted by Massachusetts Electric and Grid Company for a new poll on Green Street with the condition that National Grid notify the police department of the date work will begin.
Second.
Moved by Julian Hirsch, seconded by Tim Kalen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Julian Hirsch?
Aye.
Leslie Ratan?
Aye.
Tim Kalen?
Aye.
And I, Jason Perro, also vote aye. The petition is approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Parent. You're free to proceed.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. That brings us to reports. Scott Rogers, would you care to lead off?
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just continuing to take advantage of the webinars and other resources from both the Mass Municipal Association as well as our own remote meetings. Of course, on the remote meetings, excellent source of information to residents, so I'd strongly encourage if anyone's interested in a particular board or committee to watch those meetings and and see what's happening live if possible. Of specific note, the Community Affairs Committee Committee had a meeting on September ninth that I participated in along with Chief Parenti as a master of ceremonies there. And it was great to see that committee be at full membership and brainstorming some really fun ideas for for the for the town during this coming holiday season. Also, I'd like to thank the chief for the monthly report from the fire department. Probably two items worth mentioning, if the chief's so inclined, would be the the responses that they had to take for unauthorized burning and maybe a word on the accidents that are occurring with rental trucks up at the aqueduct, if you don't mind, chief.
Certainly, I'll speak to the the unauthorized burning first. Although many people may not, it may not seem like it out there, but we are in a drought. State of New Hampshire today had no burning throughout the entire state. We are not that far behind. Now, we do not. It is not burning season in the Commonwealth, so you cannot have a a fire to dispose of debris, you know, such as tree limbs and all that. You are permitted to have a cooking fire per state law. However, you need to call the fire station first to advise us whether or not you're going to be, you know, you if if you intend on doing it. We may tell you winds are too high or it's too dangerous today. No, you can't have a fire, but it also gives us a heads up. If we do get a call of smoke in the area, we know what we're going to. So for sure, use, if you do have a outdoor fire pit and you do have a cooking fire, make sure you have a hose nearby and use great care. Make sure the area around the pit is cleaned. Right now, you're going to have debris around there. It's been windy. You're going to have some leaves that are going to start to pile up. You're going to have some other types of duff, some pine needles. Make sure that's all cleared three feet around your fire pit. Just a dangerous time right now, so please use great care. As far as the the U-Hauls into the aqueduct, I think Chief Liver could probably speak better to that than I can. I can tell you, we just had another one of those again. I think it was two weeks ago. It just seems like, I don't know how, but every month or so, we tend to put a U-Haul into the aqueduct, and it's crazy. I wish we had spoken, I think Chief Liver had actually has sent someone out to make sure they spoke to the renters to tell them to not go that way, and they still go that way. And then they say, well, I'm going to squeeze right down the middle lane because it's it's ten feet, and this is ten feet tall, and I'll fit. Chief Liver, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
You're muted. It's usually because the last time someone drove a truck that big was never.
Yeah.
You know, and you're absolutely right. They think they can fit it down the middle, but there's a car coming the other way, so they have to swerve right. That's usually what occurs. The one that surprises me is the professional truck drivers and the eighteen-wheelers.
Yes.
But, yeah, bridge three hundred, trucks zero still, you know.
Yeah, it's interesting. You you see a tractor trailer trying to back up on that road because they come around a corner and see the aqueduct. Same thing's happening up on Whitney Street on occasion. You'll see them try to get because they turn right, which is a six-ton limiter, left off of barefoot, which is a five-ton limit. So it's interesting.
Thank you, Chiefs. Scott, continue.
Yeah, just finally, I'd like to thank the traffic safety personnel, DPW, for the installation of the warning signs approaching Ellsworth McAfee Park. Hope that with that, drivers will better adhere to the speed limit in that area, especially coming down off the hill at Assavet and be more mindful of the people that are attempting to cross the roadway, South Street and one thirty-five at those really well-marked locations, but drivers tend to not be mindful of those markings nor the people trying to wave them down to stop so they're allowed to cross. So thank you for that additional bit of safety. I hope that that improves the situation. That ends my report.
Thank you very much, Scott. Julian?
Yeah, hi. Okay, so the White Cliffs Committee met on September third, and we got an update on many of the repairs that have been taking place over the spring and summer. Most people have probably noticed that there's a new roof on the building, and several other projects have been addressed as well. Our next meeting will be September twenty-second on Zoom at ten AM, and the architects will be joining us at that time to discuss a continuing discussion about the future possibilities for the building. Also, the Northborough Cultural Council met recently, and they are continuing to try to plan art and cultural events for the town even in this time of social distancing. And I would just like to draw attention to the fact that they do have a survey on our website, and it's a short one. It's open-ended, and they would like very much for people to participate. They've always already had a lot of cooperation, so. But they're looking for a lot of feedback, so please try to do that. And Apple Fest is coming up. I I imagine many people saw the article in the Community Advocate about the details of how Apple Fest will be different this year, but will still take place in a more virtual format. Some events obviously had to be canceled, but others will be modified or held virtually, following all of the guidelines for keeping safe during the pandemic. Any questions that you have might be answered on their website, which is www.northboroughappelfest.com. The dates are September twenty-fourth through September twenty-seventh, and I'd just like to thank them for keeping up the tradition during these trying times, even though things do have to be different this year. And I'm going to end with best wishes for all of the people going back to school. They've put in monumental effort and many, many, many hours to to come up with the best possible plan, and I wish everyone well. And that ends my report.
Thank you very much, Julian. Leslie?
I want to thank Chief Parenti for his fire department reports. Always very informative. I love all the statistics that you that you show on there, and it is interesting to me still that there are more females, I think, that have accidents and things. That seems to be proven month after month, I see. But and the fact that you share things on Facebook and so forth, I think people do find those those things interesting. So thank you very much for that. And again, just reiterating what Julian talked about as far as Apple Fest, northboroughappelfest.com. And I guess, too, this year, it makes a difference for us in terms of town resources with with some of these things happening virtually, that we won't be requiring as many DPW staff, fire department and police staff. I don't know the details, all that, the intricacies, logistics of all that, but that certainly changes up what what is required of the town, I assume, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so it certainly is a different year altogether, and I do appreciate what the Apple Fest Committee is trying to do to to keep the tradition going this year. Also, I had gotten some inquiries from people about whether or not there's going to be Halloween, and John did inform me that there I don't know if there's anything new on this, but that we were waiting for some guidance from the state, which actually makes sense because it'd be nice if all the towns were handling it similarly, because otherwise we get into this whole thing, and well, why is Northborough doing it and Westborough isn't, or vice versa? So I think it is, it would be ideal, I would, I believe, if the state did come forth with some sort of guidance on this and what they're hoping communities do. Is there anything new on that, John?
No, through the chair, we haven't gotten anything additional from DPH. Most staff is on a weekly call with their respective professional associations. I know the issues come up, but there hasn't been any any guidance provided just yet, so. As you, as you said, we're hopeful that whatever guidance is provided, there's some level of consistency, so you don't have the towns next door doing something radically different. So we're still waiting, waiting to hear. As we get closer, if we don't hear, we'll rely on perhaps our Board of Health to provide some some guidelines to us, but hopefully we'll get some kind of a consistent sense of what's going to happen.
Whenever we hear more, will there be some information on the town website or via town news then, so people know where to look for information?
Absolutely. As soon as we have some guidance, we'll provide it through press releases, town news, website, all the usual social media accounts.
Okay, thank you. And I would like to thank the superintendent, staff, teachers, students, and parents. There's a lot of hard work going on for the reopening of the schools. It's a staggered approach to elementary, middle, and high school. And I just, I just can't even imagine all the work that is going on to just finagle everything logistically and to keep everyone safe at the same time. Classes have to be worked out, bus schedules, even lunches is an issue in terms of making sure that all kids are getting lunches, not based on free reduced or anything like that. That will continue to be all kids. Will it be delivered, though? Will parents come and pick it up at the school? Can it? One question that came up at a meeting that I was in last week was can a someone in a neighborhood go to the school and gather up the lunches for all the people in that neighborhood and drop them off, things like that. It's just a lot of small details that that do mean a lot, though, to people. So I do want to thank the school department for everything they're doing. And I wanted to add about remote meetings. Scott had mentioned, you know, being able to view a lot of these meetings, and actually, in a lot of ways, right now, everything being on Zoom makes it easier to attend things. You just have to sit down in one place and tune in, and David Kane from our MIS department is working on making these things a little bit more accessible and said today that there is going to be or is now a button on the town website, so it's a little bit easier to access these meetings. So I want to thank him very much for that. He's doing a great job. So that is my report.
Thank you, Leslie. Tim?
I just want to thank the chief, Parenti, for the monthly report from the fire department. It's always great information. I do appreciate all the data. I think that's it always, it always gets me going. It's always good to see.
But steady geeks have to hang out together, Tim. That's just the way it works.
Yeah, yeah, I've got another tool that I got to show you sometime that I think will really, really get your blood going. I also wanted to thank all the, as as everybody has said previously, everybody that's involved with getting the kids back in school. I know having my two kids, it is a monumental effort to get those kids back into into some sort of of routine. And the amount of work that has gone into it is just, it's it's been impressive. With that being said, just a reminder that all the kids are going back into school, so the school buses will be back on the streets. So please pay attention when you're driving, when those stop signs come out on the school bus. That's not a recommendation. That's a, you must stop, so please pay attention. And that ends my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tim. For my report, a few items. First, a couple of observances. September fourth was the sixth anniversary of the loss of Brian Arsenal in Afghanistan. Brian was a specialist with the it was eighty-second Airborne and tragically lost his life in service to the country. So just wanted to make note of that, and and in conjunction with that, remind people that the Burrows Cares for Troops Group is launching a hometown heroes initiative here in Northborough. This will be banners for a number of individuals who've served in in our armed forces as an acknowledgement of their service and thanks. These banners will be following Apple Fest will be mounted in the same brackets around town through the for a period of time, certainly through Veterans Day, I would assume. If you have any interest in supporting that effort, you can go to Burrows Cares for Troops website, BC four T, that's number four, BC four T dot org. You'll have an opportunity to make a donation there. September eleventh, as everyone knows, is the nineteenth anniversary of the the attack and the falling of the Twin Towers in New York City, along with a number of other incidents. It's certainly a very solemn period, and one thing that I've taken note of this year is the concern that people are forgetting, something that we always said we must never forget. So I think with the passage of time, it's inevitable. You have your, you know, twenty-year-olds today who weren't born or were only just born at that time. They don't have any recollection except what they see in here through through media or history reports and everything, so it's imperative that we just try to keep memorable and tragic event like that in our thoughts each year when it comes around. And I want to acknowledge the both the police, fire, medical personnel who were on the job that day. Many sacrifices among them, and I just want to thank our public safety people here in town and everywhere for the job that they do every day to try to keep the rest of us safe. Apple Fest has been mentioned. I just, I won't repeat what's been said, but I will note that some of the events that are planned, for example, the the apple pie sale or the American Legion Chicken Barbecue Events typically want you to place your orders or buy your tickets in advance. Just please take note of that. I recommend, as Julian mentioned, go to the website, northboroughappelfest.com. That's Northborough with the O U G H. And you should be able to find the list of events there and whatever details are required. I believe the Legion is selling tickets at the Legion from three to seven, three PM to seven PM Thursday and Saturday. And if I'm not mistaken, I think the apple pie orders need to be in by the eighteenth this Friday. So just be aware of that. One more item. The acknowledgement to Tugus Farm. USA Today ranked the top ten apple farms in the country, and Tugus Farm came in at number six, and I'm sure we would quibble about one through five, so congratulations to them for that national recognition, letting the country know something that we already know, just a fine, fine sight and kind of a gem of the Northborough community. So congratulations to Tugus Farm for that that honor. Want to thank Town Clerk Andy Dowd, Assistant Town Clerk Karen Wilbur, and our election workers for conducting the primary election, which just concluded a couple of weeks ago. Almost done for the year. One more election coming up. I'm sure it won't be too busy, you know, compared to what's gone before, but you never know. So if anyone has any questions or concerns about how they can vote and the timing of that vote, they should probably go to the town website, Town Clerk page, and should be able to find the information they need for either obtaining and submitting a mail-in ballot or voting in person on, I believe it's November third, Tuesday, November third, where the election will be held at Melican Middle School. And then finally, I'll just echo the sentiments for school openings. Obviously, a great deal of planning and a great deal of uncertainty going into this to launch the school year. Inevitably, there are going to be glitches. And so I just ask everyone involved, parents, students, teachers, administrators, and everyone around them, just do your best to cope with the situation. Clearly, the 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 focus is on trying to to make the education deliver delivery as complete and effective as possible. It's going to place a great demand on everyone, and we'll just need to try to make an extra effort to to cope with the difficulties as they arise. to, to cope with the difficulties as they arise as we go forward with this. So that concludes my report. John?
Just a couple of things for you this evening. One, I did want to update the board. The request was made at your last meeting in terms of the status of some of the enhanced notification features on the website. I'm happy to report to you tonight that MIS has made some adjustments under the notify me button right on the homepage. You can now click and subscribe to any active order committee to receive their agendas and their minutes. I know Selectman Hersch had requested that. We got a little bit behind on that with our COVID efforts, but MIS was able to complete that. So that function is now live and there. So anybody who wants to subscribe to receive those notifications, you're welcome to do so. The other piece of news I have tonight, I'm very excited about. I am extremely pleased to announce the selection of Rebecca Meekins as the town of Northborough's new Assistant Town Administrator. Becca is a graduate, master's in public administration from Clark University. She's a certified procurement officer in Massachusetts, which is great for us. And she has been serving since 2016 as the Assistant Town Administrator in Grafton. So one of our nearby neighbors. So she's happy to make this move over to Northborough. And many of the skill sets and responsibilities with budgeting, special projects, procurement, insurance, HR, very, very similar to responsibilities for the assistant position here. I'll just say it was a long process. We looked, we went out twice to make sure we had a good fit. And Becca was the unanimous recommendation of the screening committee and, and my choice as well. So we have extended the offer. She's accepted. And she will be starting her new job in Northborough as the Assistant Town Administrator on October 5th. So we'll try to get her in at one of your upcoming meetings for just a, a brief meet and greet. But obviously it's been a, it's been a long process and I'm really happy with the outcome and looking forward to get Becca on staff and, and working with us. So, so that's great news. Just a couple of other updates while I have you. So we're winding down the assessors recruitment. I hope by the end of the week I'll have an announcement with regard to a board of health agent. We actually have somebody. I just, they just need to finalize giving notice to the current employer. So I can't make that announcement tonight, but I'm very excited about that appointment as well. And the screening committee, the library director screening committee has completed its work and has sent three candidates to the library trustees for review and appointment. And I can tell you, we've got, we had a great applicant pool there. All three candidates are exceptional and I would be pleased with any one of them. So I think the town is in great shape there. So making some good progress. We spent the last month focused very, very heavily. It seems like all we did was interview, but, but we're in great shape and all those recruitments are coming to a close. But obviously the one year dear to my heart is that Assistant Town Administrator position. And can't wait to get somebody on board. I've got a stack, a few stacks of paper to give for Becca when she arrives. So very, very pleased. Next meeting I'll hover in. You guys can, can, can meet her by Zoom. And then by the meeting after that, she'll be on board. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, John. The next segment of our show is public comment. And before we proceed with that, I just want to do some preliminaries relating to that. Public comments an opportunity for the public to offer input, comments, questions, concerns to the board. Because none of these are posted agenda items, the board will not actually engage or deliberate in any detailed discussion or any actions, commitments. If there are certain questions or something that it's easy for, for staff to respond to, we will certainly try to answer those in real time here. But anything in depth, we'll have to just take that and, and reply at a later time. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per person at a maximum. If you're on the line here, I see four attendees, three of them are connected to the Zoom app. One is calling by phone with last three digits, zero nine one. If you would care to offer public comment, please either raise your hand through the Zoom app or if you're on the phone, you can dial star nine, which I think has the effect of raising your hand. I see one hand up and let me bring you in. John Wickstead? Hello, John?
Hi, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can. Did, did you hear my preliminaries?
I did. Thank you very much.
Okay, three minutes begins.
I'll be short. My name is Sean Wickstead. I live at Two Stirrup Brook Lane. I find it interesting, based on your previous discussion, that we currently have so many 18-wheelers in town that they're starting to crash into the aqueduct. This is clearly a result of the amount of industrial building and warehousing that we've had in Northborough. I wanted to call and just let the board know that we're seeing a ground swell of interest in our save bartlett.org website. And I would encourage the board and any members of the public to take a look at it. Again, that's save bartlett.org. People all over town are asking us for signs. Currently, there's a proposal before the planning board to build 150,000 square foot distribution center, 100 feet from Stirrup Brook. Again, that's a four acre building with four acres of pavement. They'll be located 100 feet from Stirrup Brook. Anybody who's been over there using the trails will know what a beautiful area that is. And it's a travesty to think that this natural resource will be lost to our town forever. So again, I'd encourage everybody to take a look at save bartlett.org. We currently have a petition as well. If you'd care to sign it. There had been over 500 residents of Northborough who signed our petition. I appreciate the board's time and I would encourage everybody to take a look at this website. And also to take a good, long look at the trail system over there on Stirrup Brook and how this will be impacted by 150,000 square foot distribution center. The last comment I would make is regarding public safety. The last thing we need is another 36 high bays bringing trucks in on a road that all of the students from Southborough travel to get to Algonquin Regional High School every day. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wickstead. I have Rich Armstrong bringing you in now. Hello, Mr. Armstrong.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. I'm sorry. Could you name and address, please?
Yeah, this is Rich Armstrong and my wife Rachel's here. We're at 10 Hemlock Drive in Northborough. Just wanted to make sure my mic was on. Last time we had a little problem in the planning board. Had a little hot mic incident. Yeah, I just want to reiterate the comments that Mr. Wickstead presented. I thought it was interesting too, to hear the comment about the tractor trailers and the aqueduct incidents occurring. I'm not sure, you know, where the town's going to end up on this whole situation, but redirecting trucks away from Route 20 would be great. I don't know whose purview that sits under, but if we could send all trucks coming out of these distribution facilities down towards Cedar Hill and out that way. I walk our dog every morning. I live over by the high school, for those familiar with Hemlock Drive. And there's a number of trucks barreling down Bartlett every morning here. So appreciate the, the board taking a look at the save bartlett.org website. And my wife is here with me and we found it interesting. We attended the school, school board meeting a couple of weeks back. The joint school board meeting. They, they were unaware of this pending building being built right next to the school property. So again, we're all neighbors in this town and hopefully we can do what's right to save the green space that we have left.
And just one more comment, even if you're able to redirect the trucks to make a left and not a right after their access drive. Again, everyone from Southborough needs to access Cedar Hill. So they're all going directly in the direction of teen drivers coming up Cedar Hill and going into the high school. So that as the parent of someone who's in the licensing process right now and every other parent I talk to, that is, you know, my daughters have friends in Southborough. Everyone is just up in arms about the safety that's putting at risk of our kids by bringing in, you know, God knows how many more 18-wheelers near this high school.
Okay, that conclude your comments?
Yep, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate your input. I have two other people listed as attendees. If you'd like to speak, you can raise your hand on the Zoom app or dial star nine if you're calling by phone. Going once, going twice. And public comment is concluded. New business discussion regarding the formation of diversity and inclusion committee. I'm sorry, let me add just one more thing. I apologize. In relation to public comment, I had a, a written email submission sent to me today by Nicole Lomerson at 64 Fernbrook Road. She submitted something which she wanted to be read tonight. It's, the item we have coming up is not a public hearing. And so we would not be taking any public comment at that time for it. And secondarily, members of the board of selectmen typically are not agents of public comment for people to submit written things for the board member to disclose during the meeting. I think that's the responsibility of the citizen to be present, present their comments in their own words and/or have some do it on their behalf if for some reason they're unable to appear at a meeting. So I will acknowledge that we received that. I will say that the substance of the comment was to ask that informing the diversity and inclusion committee, the board take consideration of having some representation for disabled citizens on that committee or in the investigations that that committee conducts. That's, that's the substance of what is being requested here. So I just want to make that acknowledgement, but I want to be clear that people who wish to make submissions for public comment need to do so themselves or they need to have another citizen appear on their behalf. So. Thank you for that. So going to the agenda item, discussion regarding formation of diversity and inclusion committee. Selectman Kalen drafted the charge of the committee, which is here in our, presented in our, our packet here. It's similar to what has been presented previously. Tim, would you like to do the presentation for this?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just read what is included in the packet so that it's, everybody can, can hear what it is. Diversity and inclusion committee. On August 10th, 2020, the Northborough Board of Selectmen established a diversity and inclusion committee that will consist of a diverse group of Northborough residents that is representative of the town population and numbering no more than eight individuals. Each board, comedian, department listed below is invited to appoint one member to serve as a representative, representative on the committee. The board of selectmen, school committee, council on aging and town administration. The other four members will be appointed by the board of selectmen and join the other members to complete the following committee charge. One, 10 meetings that will be held at minimum once a month. Additional meetings may be required. Two, review any existing policies and procedures currently in place within the town of Northborough related to diversity and inclusion. Three, the committee will offer opportunities for community engagement and input through interviews, public listening sessions, surveys and social media. Four, identify potential areas for improvement based on relevant local, state and national research and experts on best practices. Five, provide quarterly updates to the board of selectmen on the progress being made. Six, submit a written report detailing the findings and recommendations of the committee to the board of selectmen within 12 months from the date of the committee's first meeting. The diversity and inclusion committee will be supported by a staff member from the town administrator's office. Requests for information from town staff or department shall be made through the support staff rather than directly by committee members. At any point during their work, diversity and inclusion committee may seek support of town staff or other bodies the committee deems appropriate, included but not limiting to those listed below. Police, fire, school, town administrator or assistant town administrator. And that is the charge for the committee.
Thank you very much, Tim. Comments, questions from board members? Julianne?
Yeah, so I think that this is an excellent document. My, my one suggestion or question is, so, so the number eight, I, I think oftentimes it's good to have an odd number, just if things come to a vote. You have, you know, it makes it easier than having a split vote. And I, I did a really quick search of other towns' diversity committees. And they, other areas of, or departments that are represented, which I think is, is, I, was something I'd like us to talk about, would be such areas as clergy, police, library. We got a very, you know, Jason already referred to the very excellent email from Nicole Lomerson about including persons with disabilities. And even maybe trying to get someone in a, in a young age group, you know, 18 to 25. So I, I don't know how my fellow selectmen feel about this, but generally when we, we identify the committee, there's some guidelines as to what the talents we're looking for. It certainly doesn't mean that anybody, I mean, I think people at large are always extremely important, but if we, you know, kind of suggest or include one or all of those groups, it would, it would round out the committee.
Any other questions, comments? I'll chime in. I take your point about the even versus odd number. I would maybe be inclined to expand the number of members of the public from four to five for that purpose. I think we want to draw the distinction between membership on the committee and, and understanding that one, one action the committee will take will be a significant amount of outreach to the public across the various constituencies. So I, I don't see necessarily trying to fine grained representation by expanding the numbers of, of the committee members in order to try to hit check marks for, for, for representation of, of various groups here. What I do expect though, is that we'll have a sufficient number of people who can act efficiently because we're looking at this as being about a 12-month effort. And as part of that effort for them to be doing a suitable amount of outreach to various groups in town, which might include youth, which might include seniors, which might include various racial or ethnic groups, would include religious diversity. So while we may or may not have someone as a committee member who's clearly a representative of a particular group. I think the group as a whole, their mission here is to do that outreach and provide appropriate representation for all the groups that we, we think we're trying to reach here. So from that standpoint, I would, I would agree to increase the membership by one for the members of the public to make it nine instead of eight. But I think from here forward, it will be the role of the board of selectmen to open, kind of open for applications for people who are interested in serving, to take those applications in and then to kind of make the evaluation up from among those applicants. to take those applications in and then to kind of make the evaluation up from among those applicants who, you know, what the right mix would be in in terms of diversity on the committee and ability to go out and conduct the business of the committee so that it is broad reaching across the community. Tim?
Yeah, I just want to add to that when I was putting this together, thank you for pointing out the the eight versus nine. I did that never even crossed my mind. So thank you for for pointing that out. As far as the the representation on the committee, what I was thinking is is that that people from the community will apply to be on the committee on the committee. And then part of the interview process will be going through and making sure that there is a diverse representation from the town. I get nervous classifying, certain people have to fill certain roles. Because if there's nobody from that particular group that wants to serve on the committee, then we lose the seat. Because we can't fill it because it can only be filled by somebody that fits the criteria. So I do believe that that will get a number of good applications from people. And as we go through the the interview process, I think we'll get a very diverse group of people represented represented on the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Comments, Leslie?
A quick question, when do we anticipate applications for this being available? Couple people have contacted me saying they're interested, so I wanted to see if there was some sort of date for that and where the applications would be available.
Good question, John, yes?
Yeah, if I if I may, so it would be just like any other border committee opening. We would advertise it, put it out through social media, through the town's website. And then the application and that process would be the same as for any other border committee. So the the application forms they can send in, anybody interested can send in their their application to Diane Whackel. And Diane will assemble that and get it to the interview committee to 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 go through their process. But yeah, it'd be similar to the same process I would envision as we use for any other border committee opening that the board is looking to fill. So that can get out, assuming the board takes their votes this evening and where everybody's comfortable with the makeup and the charge of the committee. Then we can get that out, you know, in the next couple of days and start that process, you know, for your your next meeting.
Very good. Any any other comments? Yes, Scott.
Thanks, Jason. So yeah, I was gonna ask Tim that kind of that same question as what you mentioned, Tim, about if we if we begin to category that we wanted to have represented, we might we might apply for that.
Scott, your audio is dropping out frequently.
Yeah, my apologies there. I'll make it very brief then. In the interest of getting going with this committee, I think rather than try to change the charge and identify additional information, I think this is a great document and charter to run with. And then if we can get approval of this and move forward with applications, like Tim mentioned, I think we'll get a lot of great people applying to be on this committee and then have the sort of perspective to represent others from across the community.
Thank you, Scott. I I like Leslie and I'm sure several of you. Once the first mention was made of forming such a committee, I had some inquiries from people who expressed interest. Were interested to serve, wanted to know when it was going to happen. So I have no doubt that we will get many applications and the difficulty will be to sift through them all to get the interviews conducted. So the sooner we get going with that part of the process, the better. We may want to set a deadline for applicants just so that we can you know, encourage people to apply promptly and allow the board members time to begin working through some of those. Is there, I mean, today is September fourteenth. What what does everyone think would be a sufficient amount of time for applications to be for the for it to be publicized and applicants to turn around their submissions? Yes, Julianne?
So I would say I would say a month.
A month through, so basically through mid October. Leslie, you agree?
I was gonna say a month as well, yeah.
Okay. So I I think I know Tim had hoped to get this launched and up and running quicker, but I I think that yes, we I think we're going to have a lot of applications to work through before we get to the point of actually making the appointments and getting the committee operational. So I think it's more important to know that once operating, the committee essentially has about a year's time to conduct its work. And certainly the quicker we can get up and running, the better, but we do want to allow sufficient time for members of the public who might be interested to submit their applications and get, you know, do the right due diligence in reviewing all of those and talking to the applicants and and getting to the point where we're ready to make appointments. So a month time then, shall we say? I forget what the date is.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Just something to consider?
Yep.
So a month from today would be October fifth. And then I believe you're the selectman's meeting is scheduled for October nineteenth. If the goal is to get the have the deadline and have the interview committee conduct interviews and be prepared to make actual appointments at your meeting in October. Then my suggestion would have would be to have the deadline be October fifth. Then the interview committee can do the interviews over the next couple of weeks and and potentially be in a position to make recommendations for appointments at your, I believe your next meeting is or your October meeting is the nineteenth.
Yeah.
That timeframe would work. If you push things off a little bit, then I don't know that the committee is going to have time to do the interviews and make recommendations.
I think that sounds like a very reasonable. I think that sounds like sufficient amount of time to get sufficient number of applications in. So
Keeping in mind also that the deadline would be October fifth, that doesn't mean that the screening committee or the interview committee couldn't begin doing its work prior to that deadline if you've get usually the way it works with these is you get a rush of applicants right at the beginning. And then it takes a little time for the word to get around and some more will trickle in. But but that would work if the intention is to have the committee appointed by your meeting in October on October nineteenth, I think that schedule would work.
Okay, very good, John. Thank you very much. I'm in agreement with that set in October fifth deadline for applications and certainly anyone who submits something earlier, we can get to them earlier in terms of interview committee. So to go back to the motion in front of us, we need a motion. Tim, do you have the text of the motion?
I do. I'm just gonna update it. So it's it's nine members, not eight.
That's fine. Yes, thank you.
I move the board vote to establish a diversity and inclusion committee that will consist of a diverse group of Northborough residents that is representative of the town population and numbering no more than nine members to include a representative of the board of selectmen, school committee, council on aging, town administration. Five members from the public appointed by the board of selectmen. The committee will have the following charge. Attend meetings that will be held at minimum once a month. Additional meetings may be required. Review any existing policies and procedures currently in place within the town of Northborough related to diversity and inclusion. The committee will offer opportunities for community engagement and input through interviews, public listening sessions, surveys and social media. Identify potential areas for improvement based on relative relevant local, state and national research and experts on best practices. Provide quarterly updates to the board of selectmen on the progress being made. And lastly, submit a written report detailing the findings and recommendations of the committee to the board of selectmen within twelve months from the date of the committee's first meeting.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote. Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Let's, sorry, Julianne Hirsch?
Aye.
Leslie Ratan?
Aye.
Tim Kalen?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, carries unanimously. Sorry, I got out of order there. My panels switched around here. You you're not in the same place as you were earlier. Tim, I want to thank you for all the work you've done on this, taking the lead and and doing the investigation and coming up with this. I really appreciate the effort and the contribution to the board's work. Thank you, members, for your discussion and suggestions on this. So to wrap this up, we have the definition of the committee. We have the charge. We have an October fifth deadline for applications for people who are interested in serving on this committee. And the information I soon, John, will go up on the website promptly so that people are aware and will have the opportunity to begin submitting their applications.
Yes, well, Mr. Chairman, we'll also make notice to the school department that we'll be expecting them to make an appointment as well as the council on aging. We'll communicate to those two entities tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Let's see, okay. And moving on to the next item on the agenda, interview subcommittee recommendations for appointments to the Conservation Commission, Historic District Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, Scholarship Committee and Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund Committee. Do I have a motion or three or more? Leslie?
Mr. Chair. First of all, I would like to say we have some fabulous applicants. I'm just so happy that people are willing to volunteer. And there's some wonderful people in town with some some wonderful backgrounds. So very much appreciated. First motion, I move the board vote to appoint Dan Clark to the Conservation Commission for a partial two-year term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, as recommended by the interview subcommittee.
Second.
Moved by Leslie, seconded by Tim. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Scott?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I will also vote aye unanimously. Next motion?
I move the board vote to appoint Brian Swanson to the Historic District Commission for a partial two-year term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. As recommended by the interview subcommittee.
Second.
Moved by Leslie, seconded by Tim. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Scott?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I vote aye unanimously. Leslie?
I move the board vote to appoint Millie Milton to the Historic District Commission for a partial one-year term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. As recommended by the interview subcommittee.
Second.
Moved by Leslie, seconded by Tim. Any discussion? Hearing none, Scott?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I vote aye, carries unanimously. Leslie?
I move the board vote to appoint Gary Magellino to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a partial three-year term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, as recommended by the interview subcommittee.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, Scott?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I vote aye, carries unanimously. Leslie?
Move the board vote to appoint Carrie Thornton Genova to the Scholarship Committee for a partial three-year term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. As recommended by the interview subcommittee.
Second.
Moved by Leslie, seconded by Tim. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Scott?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I vote aye, carries unanimously. Leslie?
Okay, last one. I move the board vote to postpone the appointment to the Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund Committee to the board's September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, moved by Leslie, seconded by Tim to postpone. Is there a reason for the postponement?
Yes, we have another candidate that was interested and we will be interviewing that individual prior to our September twenty-eighth meeting so that we can then appoint that person at that meeting.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote to postpone the appointment, Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch?
Aye.
Leslie Ratan?
Aye.
Tim Kalen?
Aye.
And I will vote aye unanimously. And I believe that concludes our appointments for this evening.
Yes.
Next item is execution of cemetery deeds one one zero zero and one one zero one. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move the board vote to execute cemetery deeds one one zero zero and one one zero one.
Second.
Moved by Scott Rogers, seconded by Tim Kalen. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Scott?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Leslie? Tim?
Aye.
And I vote aye, carries unanimously. Any other business to come before the board, John?
No other business this evening?
Okay, Julianne, did you have a question?
Yes, I do have a question. So um, I I want to go back to the committee appointments. And I'd like to say that I I've watched them all and we're we are so lucky to have such a talent pool in the town of Northborough. And as I was thinking about the, I think it was four candidates for Conservation Commission, each person would have filled that position beautifully. Dan Clark obviously had the, you know, the the PhD in conservation science. So so that was that that decision I I totally agree with. But in terms of the Conservation Commission, this is a committee where with there's there's quite a learning curve, I would imagine. And I've noticed that in many in several towns, they have alternates on that commission. And I I I would hope that we could have a discussion maybe with Mia about talking about the possibility of doing that in Northborough.
I, you and I have talked about this before. I think you've mentioned this suggestion to me before, Julianne. And I I'm not sure what the practices are in other towns or how common it is to do that. It's certainly something we do with our zoning board of appeals. And I guess I'm not sure to what extent it's applicable to other boards in the way they conduct their business, if there's any differences in the operation of those boards. Certainly, anyone who has an interest in any of these boards can choose to attend meetings, educate themselves. They don't necessarily have to have alternate official designation to to do that. And so if there's a compelling reason to create that kind of position, then that would make sense to me. If if there isn't, other than that there's more people interested, if it's simply more people are interested in it or something, then I think they nothing bars them from the opportunity to follow the work of that committee, to become educated about it and potentially to be an applicant when one of vacancy arises.
Well, my thought is that alternates usually get all of the materials. They, you know, they can participate. They can't vote, but they participate in the meetings and it's it's a good way, I think, for people to to learn learn on these committees that involve laws and rules and regulations. So that was that was my thought. And also, since we have such a great interest in in the Conservation Commission. You know, I I was, I I thought that maybe talking to Mia, I'm I she may know of how other towns do it. She may have strong feelings about it, but it's just something I'd like to hear more information about. But if if other people are happy with the current the current iteration, I'm I'm good with that too.
Right, I I I haven't heard any concerns or complaints that our Conservation Commission has had difficulty executing their, their charge because of a lack of members or, or lack of alternates to, to stand in at certain times. Certainly, Zoning Board of Appeals, I think, is, is kind of on the hook for a lot of decisions that they render that have to have some, you know, withstand legal scrutiny, and, and there's some benefit. I think there's also, and perhaps some timeliness involved in some of those actions where the presence of alternate members who can be involved in the process and when time comes to vote, stand in and be able to execute that vote makes more sense to me. I'm not sure that that is quite the same concern or issue for the Conservation Commission. But I'd certainly entertain whatever input you'd like to get, if you want to ask the Conservation Commission members themselves, or if Mia has any input about that. So.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Sure. And having, having segued back to that, I, I, I will add my thanks to all of the applicants. The ones who are filling positions and the ones, for whatever reason, weren't selected this time around. We certainly do appreciate the interest. We do have on many boards and committees, several boards and committees, continuing openings and everything. And anyone who steps forward and is able to make a contribution, that contribution is certainly welcome. So we appreciate the willingness of people to step forward and, and make themselves available for this work. With that, any other business? Nothing more? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn the meeting of September fourteenth, 2020.
Very good. Do I have a second?
Second?
I heard a silent second from Scott Rogers, and then I heard an audible second from Tim Kalen, so I'll give it to Tim. Julianne moved, Tim seconded, roll call vote. Scott Rogers, speak up, boy. Julianne?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. The meeting's concluded. Thank you all very much. Appreciate all your help, board members and staff. Good night.
Yeah.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good luck, everybody.